Good evening. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. This is the first live in-person candidates forum we have had at Horizon House since 2019. So it's really great to have the candidates in person and the audience in person. Wonderful. Tonight, I forgot to say that I'm Laura Wees. I'm chairing the election forums committee this year. And we have a long tradition of election forums here. And tonight, we're pleased to welcome eight candidates for Seattle City Council Position Three. And they're all sitting up here in alphabetical order, so we have to show them out of the wall.
Hello.
Hello. Ryan Anderson.
Armstrong.
Armstrong. Andrew Asherfield.
Hi, everyone.
Alex Cooley.
Good evening, everyone.
Bobby Goodwin. Joy Hollingsworth. Ephraim Hudnall. And Alex Hudson. So thank you all. First, some background. The Seattle City Council has nine members serving four-year terms. They are elected -- two are elected citywide, and the others are elected by districts. Now, this year, all of the district candidates are up for reelection. Just in January of this year, we were redistricted from District Seven into District Three. So we're pleased -- we're getting to know those candidates.
Welcome.
Thank you. The City Council is the legislating branch of Seattle City Government. It has the sole responsibility of approving the city's budget and develops laws and policies intended to promote the health and safety of Seattle's residents. The Council passes all legislation related to the city's police, firefighting, parks, libraries, and utilities: electricity, water supply, solid waste, and drainage. The mayor is a separately-elected executive who has the responsibility of implementing legislation passed by the Council. All of the City Council positions are officially nonpartisan. The salary authorized is $62.11 per hour, annualized to about $130,000. Now, let our forum begin. I'm pleased to introduce our moderator, Ann Brandt.
Hello, everybody. My welcome to you too, and to the canvas. Fun is about to begin. I just want to do a little explanation for the format for tonight. It's familiar to some of you, but some of you may be new. The candidates have received the format and ground rules for the evening, and I will briefly review them for you, so that you can anticipate the way the forum is going to flow. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement. This will be followed by a question-and-answer period, when candidates will have only one minute to respond to each question. And as you can imagine, with eight people here, that takes a lot of time to get through everyone, and you'll all feel like it's not enough time. But it's the best we can do given the time and strengths we have. At the end of the question-and-answer period, each candidate will then have two minutes for a closing statement. Now, since this is a forum, not a debate, there will not be a rebuttal opportunity. However, candidates may include such remarks in their closing statements, should they choose. Candidates, please note: We will appreciate your honor and the signals of our timers. This will ensure we are fair to all of you and that we can cover as many topics as possible with our questions. Our timers, Adele Reynolds and Doris Ray, are in the front row and will give you a warning sign that will alert you when you have 15 seconds remaining. Then you will get a final signal to finish. I have behind me a cane that has a crook on it. Please note that the order in which candidates will respond to questions has been managed to avoid having any candidate responding in the same order to the questions being posed. I have been asked to remind people who would like to do so to activate your T-coil. Or the T-coil has been activated in the room, so if you use that as part of your hearing assistance, that is an operation. So I'm told you need to turn it on or something, that you need to do that. Okay. For the opening remarks and for your closing statements, we're going to ask that you come to the podium, even though it's just for two minutes, because not everybody can see you, and it's an opportunity for you to do what I'm trying to do, which is swivel. This microphone does pretty well, but when it's not being used, it will be turned off, and you will be using your hand mic to answer the questions.
Somebody's hand mic is on.
Okay, would you check to see? Because there is -- thank you. There is some feedback that happens from that. Okay. Now, we're going to begin with the opening question, with the opening statements. And as I said, please step to the podium. We're doing this in alphabetical order to start with, and we do the closing statements in the opposite way. So the "come to the podium" is not quite as chaotic, as it might be if we did it randomly. This is the only question you've received in advance, and I'd like you to please include in your opening statement the response to this question. Why are you a candidate for the Seattle City Council District Three? What are your goals and emphasis in this position? And how will you accomplish these goals? Now, for the opening statement only, we're going to take an alphabetical order, so Mr. Harlan, please go first.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us over. It's your home. I love to come here. By the way, I want to say happy birthday to Waterco, Sally Cummings, and Mary Ann Parmitra, if you're here. Happy birthday. My name is Shubhita Gharwal. I am a candidate for Seattle Council District Three. I am an immigrant from India. I'm an immigrant from India. I've been in Seattle since 2002, and I have been your neighbor for four years. I used to live in Panorama House from 2002 to 2004, and then 1020 University Street, which is the next building over, from 2004 to '6. Right now, I live on 40th and Pine in the Braven condo. And now, I have worked at Microsoft for 10 years, and after that, I pursued acting, so I'm sad I have to remember. And then finally, when I came back, I was six years away from tech, so I have been working retail. But I have been on my condo HOA board for five years, and that has taught me three main things, and that is why I'm running. Number one, you have to have empathy and listen to every point of view, even conflicting point of view. Number two, you have to set aside your personal preferential choice and reach a consensus and make that happen. And number three, most importantly, it is not your money. It is a property taxes paid by every one of you, and we want to make sure that every dollar is used wisely and efficiently. And that is what my goal is. That is what I've been doing on my condo for past five years, and I want to do it at the Seattle City level. Now, I have three main platforms. I have a seven-point platform. Thank you. First is green infrastructure, a lot of public transport, a lot of public housing, so it becomes cheaper. And three, address constituent concerns like potholes, bad roads, bad pavements, so we use your dollars effectively. Thank you.
Hello. I'm just going to run to that up a little bit. There we go. My name is Ryan Armstrong. I'm a Seattle native, born and raised here, running for Seattle City Council. I am running because of climate change. I am running because my generation needs representation on the council that is thinking beyond 2030, 2050, 2070. For me, my top three priorities are shelter, safety, and sustainability. What does that look like? Shelter is taking care of our houseless people. I remember growing up here, I was a sophomore in college in 2015, when the mayor's office declared an emergency of homelessness. Here we are almost a decade later, and what has been done? So I want to be the actionable candidate who is caseworking people and helping them find resources, and passing a law called the Right to Shelter, making universal shelter here in Seattle. Secondly, safety, we need alternatives to policing. We need to make sure that the police can specify and respond on time when you call 911. So I want to create two new departments, a 3-1-1 and a 6-1-1. 3-1-1 is specifically for non-emergent issues, potholes, renters' rights, other things that really affect people that don't get responded to. And then 6-1-1, which would be for mental health, crises, addictive services. I see too many people in our streets suffering, and I want to make that stop. Finally, the mayor's office wants to make us carbon neutral by 2050. We don't have time for that. I want to be able to have kids and grandchildren that can live in Seattle and prosper here, and they won't be able to do so unless we can decarbonize fast enough and make the Amazons of the world help pay for that. My grandfather, who passed away in the fall of last year, spent his entire life cutting fish in Booth Fisheries as a part of the Teamsters Union. And I'm a proud third-generation union worker here in Seattle, hoping to make change. And I hope you'll join me. Thank you.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Asherfield. It's such an honor to be here today. One might learn it for so many reasons. A couple of years ago, I was homeless, and during that process, I was diagnosed with AIDS. And you know, it was during a crisis where people like me did not have a voice, people like me did not have a way to be treated like human, and I had to fight the status quo. And I think that was spurred me to become involved in community and the work I do currently, which is so exciting. Currently, I'm a clinical program manager. I work around HIV/AIDS. But minus that, what do I do for the community? I work around immigration rights. I brought money into the African community for undocumented immigrants who did not qualify for COVID relief program. I do civic engagement for that community. I do a lot of work around LGBTQ+ because I know what I went through. When I was homeless, it was because I was kicked out for my sexuality. Nobody has to go through that. So I am on the Seattle LGBTQ Commission, a board of directors for the Seattle Gay Center. And I've done a lot of work around immigration rights for gay people. I go to court to ensure they don't get deported, they get asylum. But even around HIV, I come from a community where HIV has destroyed us, the black community, the queer community. We've lost a lot of people along the years to the AIDS crisis, and I work in that space to ensure that this stops and people have the right to live. And based on my lived experience, health is very important to me because of the intersectional impact of health in our community. Housing is important because I don't want anyone to go through what I went through. I know we have what it takes to ensure that people stay housed, we get people to house it, and lastly, public safety. I have the honor to be endorsed by Civil Rights Larry Gossett, former King County Council member, who's done a lot of work in our city, and I do hope you'll get to Le Maître today. Thank you.
Hello, Horizon House. Thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for having us. My name is Alex Cooley, and I deeply love our city. I believe it is at a turning point. We haven't had leadership that listens, and we aren't able to trust that our elected officials will do a good job. We've been hindered by political games, inflexibility, special interest money, and we can't afford more of the same. I decided to run the day my son was born. I need him to grow up in a place where leaders behave like leaders and respond to their neighbors when they're called upon. In my role as a husband, father, business owner, care provider, substitute teacher, I have learned that the most important piece of our lives is how we can be of service to our community. I would like to serve because we need 1 million square feet of home for the homeless. We need to make sure that we are creating pathways to allow for temporary sanction encampments for those who are yet not ready to come inside, any of the practice sweeps, and adding wraparound services to make sure that people are able to build a self-sufficient life of meaning. Additionally, we're going to reinstate the ride-free zone, and we're going to make it citywide to make sure that we're a leader again on transit nationwide. Importantly, we have to leave the war on drugs behind, invest in upstream solutions, and create a jobs pipeline for those who are formerly incarcerated, so that those with lived experience can be the next caseworkers, mental health crisis responders, and more. My campaign is being run exactly how I will run my office: direct conversations with our neighbors and by building solutions together. I'm the only candidate who is running their campaign entirely from democracy vouchers, because we all know money and politics don't mix. Thank you so much. I greatly appreciate it. I do want to share I've been endorsed by former U.S. Attorney John McCain, Nick Lukada, as well as several other small businesses. Thank you so much for your consideration. I hope you're in your support.
I thought I could do it without going. It's an awkward one, you. So we're going to just try it like this. So my name is Bobby Goodwin, and I've lived in this city for about 15 years. I work as a public defender, and so I've been doing that since 2011. I do that down south, so I live in the Central District, but I commute down to Tacoma. I am in here before you, Room C7, wonderful people, because like them, I've been frustrated with the direction of this city. For me, I'd say that really starts around the time of the chop. Watching the proliferation of the graffiti and just hearing the really toxic narratives that were corrupting, I think, our civic institutions throughout was really, really hard for me. You know, I come from a mixed family. I'm a lifelong liberal, and my parents both watched locked news. It's really fortunate, because I know better than to think that makes them evil, right? But you know, you hear very different narratives around these parts. Too often, the idea that a person is a bad person if they voted Republican, a person is -- I mean, it's unhelpful, right? And I'm running because I want to be a part of trying to bridge these divides, to recognize that there is and are good ideas and wisdom to be had from those with different experiences and different ideas. I'm the only one of the eight individuals before you who thinks that City Council got it wrong when they voted to deprive our city attorney of the opportunity to prosecute public drug consumption. And I did that despite being a public defender, because it was a wrong-headed idea. We need to have a city with accountability. We can have and do better than we're doing, and I hope to earn your vote. She's got to check her phone, getting a phone call. No worries. I'll tell you an interesting fact I learned today. Oh, I can start. No, interesting fact? Okay. No, it's your time. Okay. Good evening. I want to thank you all for having me and us here today. My name is Joy Hollingsworth. I'm running for Seattle City Council District Three. I'm a third-generation Seattleite who was born and raised in the historic Central District neighborhood. I currently live in the same home my grandmother purchased in 1947. I come from a long line of public servants of our family. My dad worked at Seattle Parks Department, keeping our parks safe and clean. I had a mother who came from New Orleans back in the '70s, when my uncle played for the Sonics, and she came up here and worked for King County Housing Authority, connecting families to resources. And then I have a grandmother, Dorothy Hollingsworth, who served on our school board for a long time, was a social worker, centering families and women. And over the last 39 years, I've seen how public policies and the communities have fallen through those gaps. And so I have five reasons why I'm running. Number one, to prioritize essential government services that affect our day-to-day lives. Number two, to connect all of our communities to the 45 different city departments that are at City Hall. Number three, to reevaluate current policies that we have, to find out where those gaps are, to connect those, to make sure that we have measurable impacts. Number four, solution-based. I'm a glass half-full, not half-empty. It's always half-full to me. How can we build on those? And number five, I'm going to pick up the phone. I'm not old enough to remember Sam Smith as our City Council person, but my grandmother would tell me stories, he would pick up his own phone. I want to be that person that connects the communities, that's accessible, that's reliable, that's really, really invested in our community. Priorities that I'm running, I think I have 15 seconds, and I'll talk about it. Public safety, number one. Affordable housing, number two. Number three, making sure that our parks and libraries are all funded. And number four, last but not least, small businesses, making sure we have a booming economic recovery. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I've got to say, we've done maybe a dozen or half a dozen of these before, and we've done about a half dozen of these forums, and there is a marked difference in the amount of civic engagement energy in this room right now. It is an honor to stand before you, holding myself up as a candidate for City Council. Thank you for taking the time to learn more about us. I never thought I'd be in this position. My folks were military. That was their path to middle class. I followed suit. That's how I paid for college and later law school. I'm running because everything the last three years has been: a pandemic, another racial rights reckoning, an attack on democracy itself. I can't be a bystander of history anymore. Why I'm running for City Council is a big thing, right? A lot of national stuff. Why I'm running for City Council? Because I've lived on both coasts. I live right between South and Colorado. Seattle has the most potential I have seen in any city in these United States. Period, full stop. I'm running because I want to build a Seattle that we can be proud to pass on to the next generation. What does that mean? Housing, public health, public safety, climate resilience. Housing, the data is very clear. We need 200,000 units of housing in the next 10 years to keep pace with growth and make up for the housing shortage. Public health, public safety. I'm a former prosecutor, folks. Let me tell you, there are real limitations to what we can do in the criminal justice system. It is not a social safety net. We need to invest in public health and social safety nets so that people on the streets get the help they need, even if they're not ready to say yes to the treatment. Last, the climate resilience. Transportation is a large part of that. The largest single contributor to greenhouse gas emissions is transportation. Decarbonizing the way we get around, decarbonizing the built environment itself, and making investments in the critical infrastructure, as, again, we can be proud to pass on the city of tomorrow to our kids. Thank you again for your time and consideration. Look forward to talking with you more.
I'm Alex Hudson, and it's an honor and delight to be back in Horizon House and in front of many of you. I have lived in King County basically my whole life. I was born out in Redmond. My dad is a Teamster, and that's how I got to be the first person in my family to go to and graduate from college. And I went up to Western. I did my study abroad up in Watcom County. And right when I graduated, right in the middle of the recession, I was diagnosed with Hodgkin's lymphoma. And because I didn't have fancy things like a savings account or health insurance, I got the life-saving medicine that I needed because of Medicaid. And that means that good government policies and the people who fought to make them happen saved my life. That's why I get to be here in plenty today. And when I had that experience, that's when I dedicated my life to public service, which is what I've done. I live three blocks from here, just up University Street, and many of you know me from my role as the Executive Director of the First Hill Neighborhood Organization, where for five years I led this neighborhood to deliver hundreds of units of affordable housing to homeless shelters in our community, to redevelop First Hill Park, to create better safety at University Union in Boylston, so when we're walking to QFC, we don't have to take our lives in our own hands, and on and on and on. I helped to fight for the Convention Center, Public Benefits, and delivered $63 million worth of investment. And after that, I went to Transportation Choices Coalition, where for five years I was the Executive Director and fought across the state of Washington to deliver literally billions of dollars worth of investment in public transit and made public transit free for every young person in Washington. Here in the city of Seattle, we need to build enough affordable and safe housing so that no one sleeps on our streets. We need to take care of people, and we need to build safe and wonderful communities. I have a lot of experience doing this, and I'm thrilled at the opportunity to build a better Seattle together.
We have some terrific candidates, so I hope you've been listening well, because they all have something valuable to add and bring to us as a community group in this. Good one. What's going to happen now is the question-and-answer period, and you're going to -- I'm going to be not invisible, but behind the podium, and I'm going to turn my podium off, because they're going to respond from their seats, but in the order that I call. You may not hear me call the order, but they'll hear me. And so I will read the question before they come to the podium or before they pick up their microphones, but they'll be -- it'll work. You'll see. Yes. Okay, here we go. When I use this thing, I'll hold it up and have it just sent to the frame, and I have to. I hope you heard him after I told him he didn't have to hold this thing up in the air. Anyway, here we go. The first question is as follows, and if you would stand with your hand holding the mic, be sure to turn your mic on, because this one's going to get turned off. If you get feedback going back and forth, we'll just have to cope with it, but I think we'll be okay. Okay. All right. Are we all right, Cassandra?
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. First question. The residents of Horizon House have a stake in the safety and viability of downtown Seattle. What specific measures for the revitalization of downtown are most important? Let me say it again. What specific measures, in your judgment, for the revitalization of downtown are the most important? And we're going to start with Mr. Goodwin.
Is it on? Yeah. Okay. Well, you know, dovetailing with what I was last -- I'll stand up. I think it's of critical importance, when we talk about safety downtown, that we take care of the open-air drug markets. We need to make sure that when you're walking downtown, you're not stepping over someone who's in crisis with a needle in their arm. To do so, although that's the norm now, it's a form of toxic compassion. We can do better. You know, the preference certainly is that we put people into treatment. Those beds aren't always available, but we need to have intervention. And that's the reason that I thought it was important that we adopt the state law, so that sometimes that means law enforcement taking that role. So that's critical. And generally speaking, making sure that we have more officers on foot, on patrol, having a presence. I think that also contributes to safety. We don't just want officers speeding down the street, you know, when something comes in a call. We want them to have engagement, to have a presence, and I think those things will make a big difference.
Mr. Cooley?
May I be heard? Thank you. Wonderful. So revitalizing downtown, first and foremost, we have to make it safe. I completely agree with Bobby. We cannot have people using substances on the corner of Third and Pine. We differ on how we solve that. I do not believe criminalization is the right step, because my mother used to take the bus as a UFCW member right in front of the Bon Marche on Third and Pine, and there was open-air drug use, and it was criminalization back then. We have to stand up a third leg to public safety to appropriately connect people with well-funded resources and services. That's how we make downtown safe. Second, we have to invest in our small businesses. Things like the Seattle Restore Program to make sure we're taking vacant storefronts and connecting it with great small businesses of merit and focused on important, long-term communities. That's how we make downtown better. Thank you. and connecting it with great small businesses of merit and focused on important, long-term communities. That's how we make downtown better. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me? Test, test. All right. I'm gonna do my best not to sound like a broken record or repeat what's been said before. We'll start with public safety. Again, I'm a former prosecutor. We cannot prosecute our way out of Third Avenue in downtown. What needs to happen is we need to have a long, serious, and uncomfortable conversation about what involuntary treatment looks like. When does it occur? And where does it occur? That will require an amendment to state law, admittedly, but I'm already doing that work, laying the foundation, working with our legislative district representation to introduce a bill in the legislature next year. Second, what does the economic vitality, the economic recovery, look like itself? We need to embrace that work-from-home is not going away. What does that look like for us? More people living downtown. Conversion of commercial space into residential space where appropriate. And then taking, taking an example out of what Bridge Columbia did with their vacancy tax, a modest proposal that simply creates economic incentive for storefronts to be filled, residences to be filled at the same time. And also investments, investments in our transportation system so that people coming from across the region can access our town 24/7, 365, not just from 9 to 5.
Thank you, Brian Armstrong. I'm in the front of your packet. You wanna flip over? For me, the definition, is this for me? The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And for me, I want to create an arts avenue from the market all the way up to Capitol Hill. The solution for an activated downtown is tourism. It's bringing people to our city and giving young people a reason to be out and about. If we have more people... Is this cutting it out or is this... Oh, it's okay. So yeah, that's my solution. That's what I want to focus on. And then also connecting the streetcars into one loop so we can have an activated entire network of a downtown area. I think the criminalization of people that are dealing with substance abuse disorders and addiction is wrong. I think we need to focus on empathy and other solutions beyond, beyond just sending people to jails we don't have room for and spending money. Is that green, is the end the end? Oh. Fifteen, thank you.
Three.
Perfect. One. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Aboham. I'm in your packets. So people want to come back to downtown. They want to feel, they need to feel safe, and they need to have shopping areas here. A lot of shopping stores have closed in downtown. We need to encourage them to come back in. The way we do that is we use the empty spaces that we have in downtown buildings, convert them into hospitals, both mental health and substance abuse health hospitals, so we can take the people off the street and give them a way, a location where they can have a residence if they are suffering from those issues and recover. We also need to build a lot more housing so people can get off the street and on, and start working again. Because housing is the basic security they need to be, feel needed, to feel welcome. And then we can work, allow stores to have more security. In India, you have metal gates. And even in QFC here, you have metal security and more security beams. And then revitalize downtown. Thank you.
So I'm gonna come from this from various aspects because I've been on the other side. And when we talk about people on the streets, I look at it from a public health perspective. And you know, people will, yeah, people use substance, there's substance use and chemical dependency as a form of escapism. If you lose... When I lost housing, my mental health went down the drain because I lost what was supposed to be security for me. So I look at it as we need harm reduction centers. And this is not just for people that to use substance and chemical, but also it brings about public health, like HIV, like hepatitis, like boardroom pathogens. It brings a place to also, people to feel safe from sexual abuse, from domestic violence. Then when we talk about businesses, we need to invest, create affordable spaces for minority-owned businesses. And we need to pedestrian our streets and reduce car traffic downtown so people could walk and feel safe at the same time. Thank you.
Downtown is the heart of our city, and getting our downtown to be a wonderful place to be is not optional. I'm on the board of the Freeway Park Association, so I know that folks here, as you're going through downtown, that even your pathway to how to get there really matters. I'm gonna go kind of in order, but we need to obviously take care of people. You've heard everybody talk about that. We need to get people who are suffering with mental illness and drug addiction off of our streets and into the care that we all know that they deserve and we want to see. We need to be supporting our businesses. I propose a small, small business sales tax holiday for local businesses in downtown to make it easier to operate a business down there. We need to make sure that we're doing the housing conversion and putting in play daycare and things like that. And importantly, what we need to do is invest in programming. There needs to be wonderful things to do downtown. I've got a lot of experience doing that, but making it so it's a great place for people will help create this virtuous long-term cycle.
I will try not to repeat everything everyone said, being at the end, but downtown is the front porch of Seattle. We have the seventh largest port in the country, and we also have the seventh busiest airport. That means tourism is coming into Seattle. So what I'd love to see, obviously, is a safe downtown. I've always talked about police, fire, and EMT being a part of that conversation for, for safety. The second piece is we have to get people inside as quickly as possible and off the streets. That's into care, that's into shelter. We have to get them inside. That's, that's very important. And the third piece, arts and culture. You have to give young people an opportunity and a reason to come downtown. Those are events. Those are concerts. Those are plays and musicals, all these different things. And last but not least, we have a beautiful waterfront connected to our Pike Place Market into all the way up to Third and, excuse me, Pike Pine Corridor into the Convention Center. We have to make those areas accessible, safe for, for walking. And I have this red thing up, and I'm done. Thank you.
We're trying to keep on here and stay on the schedule, so I'm gonna rush right into the next question. And I will repeat it again, but it needs to be during the ensuing time. The question is, what actions would you take to increase public safety in Council District 3, recognizing the Horizon House abus downtown Seattle? It's a little bit different from just the downtown issue. It has much more to do with the fact that we're new to District 3, and we want to be sure you hear that we want to be safe. We're gonna start with you this time, Joy.
Yeah.
Yes. What actions would you take to increase public safety in Council District 3, recognizing that Horizon House abus downtown Seattle?
Number one, thank you for that question. Number one, address the staffing vacancies that we see in our fire, police, and EMT. We can put incentives on saying, hey, we're gonna give $30,000, $40,000 bonuses to police. But if the tone of the council is not in the correct manner that it should be, people don't want to come work here. So obviously, I want to repair some of those relationships that are in communities that are in certain areas in Seattle to connect with police, our fire, and EMT. That's number one. The second piece for safety to me is also ensuring that we have, we reduce gun violence. Gun violence is riddling our communities in the Central District and South End. I've lost a lot of friends to gun violence. We understand that there can be different ways and pathways to address those. And so definitely fund some of our, our gun violent prevention programs and also give kids something to do after school, right? Funding our, our community centers and ensuring that they have late night. Late night was a program back in the day where we could stay until 11:00 PM at the community center. So I just want to make sure. Thank you. I don't want that red thing waved at me anymore. I'll stop.
I think the very first thing when I think about safety is mobility access to the services we need. You all are very close to the healthcare center, but it's also very dangerous because I go there myself. And ensuring that the roads are safe for people with all forms of, for mobility access. So that means traffic safety. That means investing in streetlights and crossroads. And also, at the same time, investing in community-based system like they do in the UK, where we have community officers who are not armed. We don't have to, when public safety doesn't mean having a gun on you. It means people that care about safety for everyone. It also means investing in programs to create, and I don't like the safe prison, school-to-prison pipeline, but investing in our use to school-to-union jobs through apprenticeship programs. That has proven to work, and that's gonna work in Seattle. Thank you.
You'll hear that we all share a lot of the same ideas because this is what the people of the city of Seattle want, are these proven solutions. We need a co-responder model with our police department so that the 20% to 40% of calls that they receive, which are about mental behavioral or people who are in some kind of crisis, that those people get the care that they need, and we preserve our police to be able to focus on solving crimes. The second thing that we need to do is we need to create immediate crisis mental healthcare and long-term residential mental healthcare facilities. And the way that we can fund that is with a capital gains tax in the city of Seattle. And the third way is a whole-of-government solution. We feel safe when our streetlights are on and when our crosswalks are lit and when our parks are activated. And there's things to do around community centers and people out late at night. And so it's these three things, building safety, taking care of people, and building better communities that are gonna make us feel better in the places that we live.
Being towards the end again, gonna try not to repeat what's already been said. I endorse the co-responder model, endorse well-lit areas, open spaces. But I'm also gonna tell you about the work that I, that I do. Prosecutor in King County Mental Health Court and Veterans Court. These programs are diversion programs for misdemeanor offenses, so lower-level crimes. And the efficacy of these programs cannot be denied. For our veterans program, 75% of people who enter it graduate. Less than 1 in 10 will recommit any kind of offense in a 10-year period of time. Now, health program is a little bit lower, but about 50% of people who enter it will graduate. And again, less than 1 in 10 will have another contact with a judge and a prosecutor in 10 years. This is, this is it. Get ahead of it. Recidivism reduction is the name of the game. We can respond to crime all we want, but if we don't break the pipeline, break the circle, we're just gonna be responding to the same actors, the same crimes, over and over again.
So this, as I shared earlier, one of the things that animated needs to be evolved was recognizing that the narrative was toxic, right? There is a trust gap between the community and law enforcement. And you saw it on display if you had been at the forum at KEXP that we were at. Because you would have heard a lot of candidates describing law enforcement as, as the problem, as a bunch of racists, et cetera, et cetera. And, and we wonder why there's a staffing issue in this city when the police get so little support from, from, from the folks that are supposed to be leaders, right? And I want to do better than that, right? And I want to make sure that we are making genuine effort to reach across and bridge those divides. One of the things that can contribute, I think, in, I know that Joy and I are on the level with this. We both want to see more community-centric policing. And so one of the ways that I think that we can, that we can encourage making that happen is instead of just offering cash bonuses, we tie that actually to, to property. So this is in Chicago. To help ensure that officers are living where they work, we can make it happen here.
Sure, Vitagarbar. A lot of candidates have said similar stuff. I will highlight three things. Number one, our community representatives or block officers, people who live locally, taking care of local issues such that our police doesn't need to get involved except for theft and violent crimes. Number two, I had a talk with fire union. 85% to 90% of their members don't live in the city of Seattle. Same thing with the police. How do we encourage our local youth to join en masse and give them housing, public housing, so they stay here? So they understand our neighbors? So they understand what they are doing wrong and fix it? So that they are more empathetic to their problems? A 25-year-old doesn't know how to give mental health. We need to, don't need to give him that job. That should be taken away from his plate. Okay? And finally, making sure people can travel safely, whether it's, you know, better sidewalks, better roads. You know, no graffiti. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I love how Mayor Nichols said it. Now that everything's been said by everyone, or everything's been said, but not by everyone, I will try my best not to repeat. You matter to D3, at least from my perspective. That's how I ran my campaign. That's why I've knocked 8,000 doors. I want to connect with every single person in this district and be of service to them. And that's very important on public safety. I'm the only one who spoke forward a plan to create a public safety academy. We have to own our safety in our city, which means we have to own the training and the education. We used to have an academy. It went away in the '60s. We need to bring it back. That means training our police because we're currently relying on a state system where we get five per cycle. Green, red? Red, green. Sorry. We have to build public safety academy because that creates accountable police to our model. That also gives us the third leg of public safety of unarmed response when necessary. Thank you.
Brian Armstrong, front of your packet. Let's talk about the one word in that question I want to focus on, which is action. We are missing action in this city. And for me, it's about access. We need to specify the need, and the police cannot be just a catch-all for everything. The one thing I learned from Joy in our first meeting was that a rape is considered a priority two. That's crazy. We need to really deep dive into the bones of what our police do and reform them. We need to specify what's important to our community. And for me, that should be a priority one. So I think we need to reform our police and you can talk to them. I'm going on my first ride along on Thursday, so I'll have more to report after that. But for me, we need to specify the need and have police not just be a catch-all for everything. Young people, specifically queer people who are out late at night definitely want to feel safe. And the fact that the East Precinct has been closed for so long, we need to build a bridge in the post-COVID, post-chop world. And I think I'm the candidate to do that. Thank you.
Moving right along, here comes question three. And Rocky, you're going to start us off. Do you support adding the state's recent legislation to make public use or possession of illegal drugs a gross misdemeanor to the city code and authorizing the city attorney to prosecute violators? Why or why not?
I'll be honest with you, and you're already in the front of your packets, this is great. For me, I don't believe so. I don't think that we should just punish people and not give them pathways towards rehabilitation and care. I have held people while they're going through withdrawals on methamphetamines, I've seen this firsthand in my communities growing up. I had three friends in high school die of a heroin overdose and I graduated in 2013 from Inglemore High School up in Kenmore. So this is like a real thing that's hurting our communities, but I don't think the answer is to just throw people in jail and throw money at the problem. For me, we need rehabilitation, harm reduction, and a medical approach, not just a police approach. And then eventually, there has to be consequences for actions, but I think we need to have an in-between that has empathy aligned with it. Thank you.
No, and I'll tell you why. In order to, in order for due process to be observed, a person must understand what they're charged with and be able to assist in their own defense. The people that these laws target overwhelmingly can do, can only do one or neither, which means that we, the prosecutors, have to drop the case. My proposal instead is a zero-fee infraction. We get around the criminal justice aspect of it, it is not a criminal, it's a civil infraction. Zero fee, because we're not going to slap fees on someone who cannot pay those fees, but it gives the drug recognition expert or the agent of the government, if you will, the means to remove the drugs from the person and not have to threaten jail time. And the added benefit, if we get this ITA, involuntary treatment act amendment passed, the one that I'm really pushing for, those adjudications of committed for public use can be considered by an involuntary treatment court to deliver the treatment that the person needs, even if they don't want it.
Well, I already gave you guys my answer to this question, right? And, and the answer is that I would have voted to grant that authority. You know, my friend here just said something that is unequivocally false. And there's important minutia here, but he was raising a question about competency standards. That's what he was asking, that's what he was mentioning, he's talking about due process. And so a person, when they're, when they're not competent, right? Ultimately, there's a process that would eventually send you to Western for restoration. It is just empirically not the case that a majority of folks that are, are using actively, whether it have been resting for use, lack competence. It is just inaccurate. It's also the case right now that we have something called Ricky's Law, which allows you to involuntarily commit a person based on their substance use disorder. The problem is we don't have the beds. There aren't the resources, they're not there. And by all means, we need to invest in them. By all means, we need to build them, but that takes time. It's taking time and people are dying now.
This issue is very personal to people, right? It's not just the people who are using, but the people, their family members who are impacted, their friends who are impacted. I had one of your gentlemen talk to me about an hour ago about their son who's using them. It's hard. We want them to get help, but putting them in jail is not going to give them help. What we need to do is build facilities and encourage them to use those facilities. That is the right solution. We want them off those drugs, right? They still get drugs in jail. It's a human problem. We have to deal with it human. It's our brothers, sisters, fathers, mothers, friends. So.
One, the, when it comes to treatment 101, a person who doesn't get treatment, we could force them until they decide personally to change, which is proven. I will vote no because of the work I do. I can't vote yes and go to my job and get paid because I see the aspect of criminalizing there, because I lose my patience. I've had two patients die, but when they have a space where we could go and help them, they survive. This method has been proven in Amsterdam, it's been proven in Finland. As a public health care worker, I want to have access. More, people are more prone to die in less than 10 days once they are released from prison. That's data. They go and die of overdose. So we need to stop the cycle, we need to come at human. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to appreciate what Shobhita said, which is that this is a deeply personal issue. And each and every one of us in this room knows someone or loves someone who is struggling with substance abuse disorder. The fact of the matter is, it is illegal to use and possess drugs in the city of Seattle because it's illegal to use and possess drugs in the state of Washington. The issue before the council was whether or not the city attorney should be prosecuting that rather than, than the county who currently does. But as everyone has mentioned, there is nowhere to actually take people. And so we need those long-term solutions that create opportunities for people to take that first next step towards a better future. And the reality is, is that no councilperson should have voted for that because the council was not given a fiscal note or a procedural note about how the adoption of that criminalization was going to affect the budget, the policies of the operationalization of the city of Seattle. And it is our number one duty to know what the heck we're voting on. So that's how I feel about that one.
Awesome. I agree with what everyone's saying. I would have voted no. And the reason being about that is I don't know how to solve the fentanyl crisis. I don't think a lot of people do, because we haven't seen anyone be able to solve it in our, in our country. And we know that we are in a crisis right now. One of the solutions obviously is getting everyone off the street and inside as quickly as possible, and that's through shelters. That's going to be huge. Second is, I understand it is an issue and it's a health crisis when we're going downtown, we're on the bus or just different areas and someone is smoking fentanyl. That is a problem. And that's a health hazard for people. It's happened to me, it's happened to my brothers, it's happened to my friends. And so that's very, very difficult. And so a couple of ways, besides bringing everybody inside, I also agree with what Efren had said about involuntary treatment as well. Sometimes you kind of have to, have to force people into those treatment areas, but we also have to build those beds and those shelters for people to be able to get the treatment that they need. Thank you.
So on this issue, I'm calling maybe. I waffle a bit on it. But the short of it is, I would have absolutely voted no on that legislation for a lot of the reasons that were put forward. But the biggest one is it does not come with appropriate investments into real data-driven solutions. I do know that there is a small subset of data that that intervention of law enforcement does get someone help, does save a life. But it is so far down the hill of the interventions that we have that we know that fundamentally work. We can fund these beds. I know how much it cost to put forward my program and I know where to get the funding for it. We can bring these people inside and make sure that they have substantive interventions that are successful, so we save 1,000 lives a year from accidental overdose. We will have to do the hard thing, but it is the right thing. Thank you.
These are all easy questions you guys have encouraged us to ask tonight. Take a breath, here we go. Question four. The region of homeless authority has been under intense criticism. What steps would you advocate to better achieve lasting reduction of homelessness in our community? And I'll ask those first.
I had assumed, so as a council member, we, I theoretically, will make sure that the next person who's in charge of the KCRHA is of a collaborative nature, who believes that all interventions are positive interventions, so as long as they treat people as humans with dignity, respect, to scaffold them out of homelessness. I have pledged to build a million square feet of home for the homeless within the first three years of my office. And that's all different types of home. And one of my biggest frustrations with the KCRHA is they were against the concept of tiny house villages. They are successful. Over 50% of people who go into a tiny house village stay off the street. They then go on to likely self-support lives of dignity and value. So we have to pull every lever, but first and foremost, this is a space issue. This is housing and home first with connected appropriate services to help support people with the root causes of why they are unhoused. Thank you.
Homelessness doesn't happen in isolation. It happens because there are not enough affordable homes. Seattle, Greater Seattle is expecting to grow by a million people in the next 15 years. That is 400,000 to 600,000 more housing needed. A million square feet unfortunately gets you only 2,000 housing, assuming 500 dollar or 500 square feet houses. What we need is rezoning aggressively. What we need is leveraging I-135 to build taller. And what we need is prohibition on foreign investors or people who are doing Airbnb or keeping their homes empty and reducing availability of housing from able to do that. We might have to go and change the constitution of the state so that we can do differential property taxes, so that if you live, don't live in your home, or if you keep it empty, or if you have a million, if you have a $5 million home, you're paying more in property taxes. And then you can build housing to take people off the street.
Shelter, shelter, shelter. Los Angeles is doing this, Karen Bass, the mayor there, is doing this program where she wants to get everyone inside as quickly as possible. If you've ever been to Skid Row, I go there once every quarter, work with this gentleman named Kevin, and they're all about trying to figure out different tiny home solutions for people that are on Skid Row. And so we have to think about different ways to meet people where they are. Shelter, King County last year, were able to find 2,500 beds. That was through public-private partnerships, that was through tiny homes, that was through different programming models, street team models where they went out and actively connected with people that were on, on, our unhoused neighbors on the streets. And so we have to figure out those pathways as well. And also, sorry, I was getting confused, I thought you were going to throw up the red, throw the red on me. No worries. And so getting everybody inside as quickly as possible, I think, is, is the best way and for that. So shelter, shelter, shelter. Thank you.
I'm on the board of Bellwether Housing, which is the largest affordable housing provider in this, in King County. And I know that homelessness is primarily driven as a housing problem. It caught, you have to make $204,000 a year to qualify for the average mortgage in this city of Seattle. And three years ago, that number was 140. The cost of housing here is out of control and it is driving people into our streets. And we need immediate shelter solutions, we need tiny homes, we need to invest in health through housing and repurpose hotels, we need mental health care and residence, residential facilities. Because right now, we try to put people into permanent supportive housing, like the projects that we built together at Seventh and Cherry and Rise on Madison, but people need more support than that. And we need to fight for things like Harborview and the other investments that are coming. On my website, I have a very detailed five-page policy paper about housing and homelessness where I've created more solutions.
Okay, obligatory, yes to what she said, yes to what they said. In the spirit of introducing a new and novel idea, forgive me, I'm going to get a little wonky. KCRHA is set up to fail. This is not a city issue, we know. It's not a regional issue. I would say it's not even just a state issue, this is a nationwide issue. Every major metropolitan area in these United States is facing a similar crisis with housing homelessness. Why? Because in the United States, there is no uniform access to care or housing. So people, oh, I'm sorry, came right off the line. So people are displaced from where they live to places where they think they can get the access to resources. It's up for debate how many people are actively being displaced from their communities to come to major metropolitan areas, but we know it's happening. And so my proposal is this, pay two attorneys, and the Seattle City Attorney's Office Civil Division, to build a case, to make the lawsuits happen, class action if necessary, to call attention to this issue, because we need federal intervention, we need state intervention. If we're doing the work for the region, it's not for the country.
I was able to study, New York City has a right to shelter law that was created by the court system, and I studied that in my master's program in public policy. They have a less per capita houseless population than we do with 20 million people in our greater New York area. And I think it was a problem that Jenny Durkin did not pass this right to shelter in 2019. My solution is to create a vacancy tax on commercial residential spaces so that all empty spaces are taxed and those can be put back in supply. And then we can use that progressive revenue to fund a right to shelter. That means if someone calls the city who is houseless, they have to be housed within 24 to 48 hours. And it will be expensive at first, but then we will have to innovate and take action. So that's my plan, is to take right to shelter plus social housing equals solving this housing crisis. We also need our friends at the state level to fund I-135, the PDA. We need millions of dollars of decommodified units so that people can have pathways to live a better life.
One of the problems with KCRHA is that the relationship with lots of the, these smaller providers that they engage with, you have a lot of redundancies. And, and we have a lot of situations with the left hand, I don't know what the right hand is doing, we have to work on that. We have issues, I think, also because there's disparate investment in terms of the various cities in, in the county. And we know that it's important, I think, to have that kind of an entity, because it's not just a Seattle problem. But we also know that Seattle right now is disproportionately absorbing it, right? And decisions like the council just may contribute to that, right? Because when this is the safe place to use, this is where folks who are struggling with addiction are going to come. This is the folks who prey on them, they're going to end up here too, right? There's a, there's downstream consequences to those kinds of decisions. So we need to, you know, I agree with, again, so many of the things we all share in common. We recognize that there's issues in terms of housing. We have lots of, I'm with my friend Alex here, we need to have far more investment in tiny homes and those things are important. It's, you know, put a lot of stuff together.
I talked to Eren about being homeless and it wasn't because of drugs, it wasn't because of mental health. I was kicked out because of my sexuality and inflation came and I lost my job and I had nowhere to go. And I say that because when people talk about housing, we only talk about building, 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 but let's talk about accessibility, affordability and affordability. We have a lot of social housing that has so many laws and regulations that if you're going to take people off the street, you're going to tell them you need to pass a drug test, you need to do this, you need to do that, that's not viable. We need to pass policies that brings about status neutrality to housing. Status neutrality means no barriers to housing, low barriers to housing. And I say this because I can give 500 units and if 500 people cannot get that unit or cannot be sustained in that unit, did we really solve housing? No. So we need low barrier to keep people housed and to give people house. Thank you.
Well, we're on time, which means we can have our last question before asking our candidates to pull their thoughts together for closing statements. So our last question gets right at the heart of the fiscal policies, I think, perhaps. City staff are projecting a looming budget deficit. Would you support cutting expenses or increasing taxes or some combination thereof to deal with this problem? Please explain your answer. And we're going to start with Mr. Ashen Fu.
I will increase jumpstart tax, push for a capital gains tax, push for a vacancy tax also, but most especially, we need to look at how and where we spend money. We need to invest more money in our social departments, in our human resources departments. We need to spend more money in our parks and recreation departments. We need to spend more money in ensuring our streets, our roads are safe. We need to also put more money where the services that are needed daily can get and protect the jobs of the city workers. That's where I'm going to go to. Thank you.
Yeah, so currently, our city budget is about $7.5 billion. 5.5 is our operating budget. And it has increased significantly over the years so far. And so jumpstart tax helps save a lot of the, the budget gap that we had within our city. So we'd definitely be looking into that. Also, don't want to double off what Andrew said, but also agree about a capital gains tax as well in, in our city. But I also know that, you know, we have an amazing amount of businesses that are here in Seattle. And just growing up, there was always a lot of public-private partnerships that were helping to, you know, fund a lot of different services or building different housing or creating these different spaces where businesses help contribute and small businesses and, and connected with those communities. So definitely would like to look at the budget, see where, you know, you never want to lay off people or, or do cuts, but obviously figure out how we can be way more efficient in our city operating services, but also encourage to make sure that our economic recovery will be able to fund a lot of those services with the tax dollars generated.
So I believe that the work of government should not ebb and flow with the economy. If anything, I think in a recession we see, the need for resources goes up as people are out of a job, they need to take unemployment, they need food stamps. And to have a conversation about if we need to curtail what we spend in the wake of all this increase, I find it to be somewhat disingenuous. Yes, we could be more responsible in how we spend money, but I don't think that impending recession should be the driver of us cutting what we spend. I'm in support of an increase in the jumpstart tax, I'm in support of a capital gains tax, I'm also in support of a vacancy tax, in support on a, well, I call it a landbaking tax, which is an incentive to, to develop where something has not been developed in a place. in a place like downtown, where we have derelict parking lots. We have an upside-down tax code in this state. It's highly regressive and far too dependent on what the state of the economy is. Let's get away from that. Let's have a government that's responsive to the needs of people, despite how much money people are making on the stock market.
None of us support austerity. I do not think that's the way through. There is a lot of wealth in this city, without question. And so I, like most of my friends up here, I can support the jumpstart tax, potentially increase there and these other things. But, you know, it's also the case that we have to be responsive to the taxpayer. And the taxpayer, especially those who are paying more taxes, right? Deserve to know that that money's being spent well. And so I think it is important that we look and see, well, where's, you know, how many people on, that are city employees are making more than $200,000, right? I think that's pretty reasonable to wanna ask that question and to look into those budgets. Now, some of the firefighters didn't like that question, because a surprising number of those administrators are in that category. But, you know, I'm open to asking those questions. I wanna be responsive. But like, again, everyone that's up here, we know that this city and the community in need of services, and I wanna make sure that we're paying for it.
When I was at Central Washington University, I was like the student body president, and I worked with Jay Inslee's office to balance a $10 million budget. And we always talked about in those meetings, having a bucket of water with a bunch of holes in it. And how can we stop those holes from filling out and going everywhere? So my first step would be doing audit of the current city. Where are we spending money? What's going on? And why are we losing so much money? And then second, there's never enough money, right? And for me, the priorities, as I've already stated, are shelter, safety, sustainability. And so that's my focus, and looking at everything in terms of budgetarily, what our needs are. Beyond that, I support all the progressive taxes that have already been stated. If it would be possible, I'd love to have a small income tax. I think it would be huge here, but we got rid of that back in the early 1900s, right? So I don't think that's coming back anytime soon, but someone can dream. And maybe we can get through in this century. Thank you.
This is a $50 million question you're asking me to solve in one minute. Not possible. Problem is, we are the center of Northwest, so we inherit everybody's problems. And we are trying to find everybody's solution. And we can only tax the 750,000 people who live here. We talk about jumpstart tax, but most of the billionaires live on the east side. Most of the companies there, Microsoft, are not taxed. So unless it's at a King County level, jumpstart tax only taxes two companies. Same case with everything else. And when we're talking about cutting expenses, if we're not thinking long-term, we are not actually using the dollars effectively. I can't answer this question in one minute. I'm sorry. But there's a lot of good ideas. But until then, unless we go back to the King County, we go back to state and change the ability to tax everywhere, we won't solve this. We won't solve this.
It doesn't feel like to me that just a sharper pencil fixes our problems. We can't cut. We're not cost-effective with the people who work in the Metropolitan Tower, who make our city run. You hear it directly from their mouth. So how do we manage a shortfall? We have to create substantive progressive taxes. My proposals cost about $308 million. My proposals on revenue through progressive excise taxes create $518 million. I believe the money is there. We can get it properly and effectively to create a truly, truly vibrant city for everyone. Thank you.
I have been the executive director of a nonprofit organization for over a decade, which means that every year, both in that capacity and as a board member of several organizations, I have to review a budget. And as much as I wish it was every year that I could just copy and paste and then start adding, that's not how it works. And so a budget is, yes, it's a moral document, but it's a priorities document. And it is our responsibility to make sure that our spending is delivering efficiently in order to create actual results. And that's not a political statement, that's a practical statement. And so, of course, we're gonna take a look at whether or not our spending is matching our priorities and what we're getting for our money. And if at the end of that, we need more revenue, then we're gonna take a look at that being progressive. Things like the capital gains tax, which I was the first in our race to come out in support of. So these are important, the most important work of our legislative body.
And now, for the icing on the cake, we're going to hear closing statements from all of our candidates in reverse order from the way they presented their opening statements. So we're gonna go this way at the table. And at the conclusion of that, I will have just a few words, and so will Laura Wees. Would you turn your mics off so that this one isn't going?
You've heard us all discuss very important things. And the issues in front of our city right now feel really hard. It feels really hard to figure out all of these things. But I know that hard is not the same thing as impossible. And that I have been part of making change with many of the people here in this room that is lasting and durable and progressive and aligned with our values. We have everything we need in this city right now. It is the most beautiful place to be. And we have abundance, we have a temperate climate. And more importantly, we have hard-working, values-aligned people who want to put their shoulders to the wheel of solving these problems for real. And we can do that. But we are running out of time. This is the second time in a row that our city council is gonna be majority brand-new. And whether or not we think that opening up the windows and letting a little fresh air in is right, it is what's happening. And that means that at the end of this election, the most senior city council person will have been there for four years, assuming that one of the incumbents gets through. And it is extremely important that you hire someone for this job who understands how to pass a municipal budget, how to pass and craft legislation, and how to build coalitions of people with a broad array of perspectives to get things done. And that's what I've been doing for this district, for this neighborhood, for this state, for over a decade. I am excited about the opportunity of leaving a better future for my kiddo. It is our most sacred obligation to make things better for the people who are coming behind us. And together, we can make lasting change. But to do so, you need to elect me, and I can only do that when you're some more.
All right, one of the last things between you and your evening, so I'm gonna try to not use the full two minutes. Heard a lot tonight? I gotta be honest, I don't have all the answers. Anyone here saying they do is a liar. I do believe, though, that our city has its brightest days ahead of it. That's, sorry, I lost my, I do believe that our city has the brightest days ahead of it. I believe that we can be an example on a continental scale for other cities to follow in the latter half of this century. We need a city council that has vision. Four, maybe five new faces coming to council. As Alex was saying, the second time in ten years, that will have a majority new council. Change is in the air. And change can be scary. But on the other end of that, there's a place for all of us. We need a council member that has that vision, a place for all of us. I'm hoping that you'll see me in person with that vision. You can learn more on my platform at likedef.com. Also, I have some literature back there along with everybody else. Thank you again so much for having, for allowing me to have the honor of being here before you tonight. And thank you for your engagement in this process. This is democracy in action, folks. Thank you.
I'm a kid from 23rd and East John, who had its first lemonade stand selling lemonade for $0.25 in my parents' driveway. Garfield Community Center, went to Seattle Prep, played basketball at Arizona, played professionally, nonprofit experience. We also have a small business with our family for the last 10 years. And I not only just want the job, I want to do the job. City council is the destination for me, not the stepping stone, it's the destination. And I see this as very pivotal in our community, because right now, I am literally standing before you the promise of all you all planting seeds way back in the day for a kid who grew up in the Central District, a gay black girl who had all different aspects of the Central District. And I wanna be able to provide that for the next generation, for Gen Z, for our younger millennials, I'm an older millennial, to be that center, to bridge that connection to government, so they understand a lot of the underbellies of what the government is. And then we also understand that the government has to have a sense of urgency to create a lot of the solutions that they'll be inheriting going forth. And I'm gonna leave you all with a story. I work at Northwest Harvest. There was a grandmother, I don't even know her real name, but I just know her as Grandma. She lives in South Seattle, and she turned her entire apartment into a food pantry for her entire complex. And she would go and serve people that were sick and shut in, and all families and everything. I'm running to make sure that Grandma in South Seattle does not have to do that anymore, that she can be able to age in place, she can be able to access food with the Southeast Community Center and Central Area Senior Center. And she can have a life here in Seattle and leave something for her grandchildren. So that's what I'm running on. I'm Joy Hollingsworth, running for Seattle City Council, District 3, and I have literature in the back as well. joyforseattle.com. Thank you.
In the end, when we talk about what makes a good leader, it's being able to say something even when it's difficult. Now, I admit that right now, tonight, it wasn't a difficult time to say the things that I did about my position. It appears to be probably a fairly favorable audience to that story, to that narrative. But I'll tell you, it wasn't that way at KDXP. But I still had the same thing to say. Because I'm gonna say the truth even when it's uncomfortable, even when it's not easy to hear. And that's the reason I think that I would be a good city council person, right? I don't have all of the same political experience, because it's true. This wasn't my ambition, right? But I didn't go to law school with this in mind, right? I've been serving, you know, this has come up a few times, people, like, when I talk about my position, when it comes to talking about this population of individuals struggling with addiction, people bring up, as someone did tonight, this question of having empathy. And it feels a little offensive when someone says that to me. Having spent 12 years serving, right, these individuals, 12 years. It's a long time, and it's not easy work, right? And it's not the position I take, because I like to see people locked up. I assure you, I don't. But I know that sometimes you need to have intervention. I know that sometimes that's what it takes for a person to be motivated to make change. I wanna live in a city where accountability is not just, I thought, a word of the past. It's not just a memory. But it can be, once again, a part of this city, a part of our reality. I wanna be a part of bringing that. And I think it requires having more difficult conversations, more honest conversations, and working to, again, further bridge that gap, as I shared, which will be in our law enforcement and our community. And I appreciate everyone's attention tonight. Thank you.
Again, thank you all so much. We do have a tremendous opportunity here with the new council coming in. It's not news to anyone in this room. The current council is not popular, not effective. We can't afford more of that status quo. But we have to put people in place who can do more than know better and say better. We need to elect individuals who can do better. It is paramount. Someone who can hit the ground running, not grow into the job. I've been doing that for years and years and years. I've helped the city of Seattle write over a dozen laws. I've helped the county write laws, I've helped the state write laws, the Fed. I've even lobbied on the floor of the UN for passionate, important issues to change our world. Those actions brought a half a billion dollars a year in revenue to our state. We need more of that. We have to put forward a good foot, council-wide, to make sure that we put forward the progressive and incredibly compassionate and important policies as opposed to just continuing to talk about them and study them. We have that opportunity in front of us. It is the Seattle that I intend to build for my family and every other family here. So I hope to earn your vote. If I have not tonight, I hope we can continue the conversation. Thank you so much.
I'm gonna start with a story. You know, when I was diagnosed with HIV, as I said, I didn't get this cure. I didn't get the things I needed. And one thing I know how to do is to fight. But one way I learned how to fight, rather than complaining to the doctor, I went to the place where decisions were made for HIV care, and I joined the body. Two years ago in Seattle, King County, tri-county area, food services for people living with HIV was allowed to be cut because it wasn't, people were not getting what they needed. But people kept on complaining that the reason that they were trying to get, but organizations were not giving them the food they wanted. But no one was hearing that. I joined the King County HIV Planning Council, where we deal billions of dollars in HIV care. And I said, you know what? I'm gonna use my voice to ensure that this is changed. Today, I cried at the meeting when the Congress visited me. Two years down the line, we have three organizations providing food services for people who have HIV. Not just food services, but also ensuring that the food is based on ethnic. So if someone from Nigeria could go and get food that was Nigerian. And then small businesses that sell ethnic food, I make sure they qualify to get vouchers. And I did that for two reasons. Food is health, but also to stimulate the small businesses of immigrant communities. Fighting sometimes doesn't mean shouting. It means building coalition, standing on integrity with faith. That's how I fight, and that's why I am alive today. Not because I want to do, because I have to walk the talk. My name is Andrew Asher Fu, Andrew for Seattle, and I hope I could get your votes. Thank you so much.
I'd like to take a second and tell you about my biggest hero. And that would be my grandmother, Luella Armstrong. She taught me integrity, honesty, and dedication. She spent 13 years of her life, every Monday and Wednesday, driving me down to the University Heights Center for choir rehearsal with the Northwest Boy Choir, where I learned how to be who I am today. She was one of the first women to graduate with a degree in aeronautical engineering in 1950 from the University of Washington. And for me, I want to be her in 80 years, if Seattle's still here. And no other candidate is talking about climate like I am, because our generation is terrified of what our future will be. And so we need someone who's going to take policy and learn and create actionable change in our community. And that's what I wanna bring to the city council. I wanna be accessible to the local needs, unlike the current incumbent, who, I agree with some of her policies, but she's gone national, right? I wanna focus back down to District 3, and I welcome you to District 3. District 3 holds the Central District, Capitol Hill. There's a lot of diverse communities here. And we wanna see them brought forth and celebrated in the future of Seattle. Again, my top three priorities: shelter, safety, sustainability. I can't hit it enough. I also wanna give you our campaign phone number. If you wanna give us a call, you totally can. I field calls all the time from people who are calling into our office. It's on the literature, but I can give you it over the phone or just come to me after the meeting. It's 206-657-6287. So, yeah, I wanna talk to you. I wanna learn about what you wanna see. And I wanna create a Seattle that's gonna be able to survive the next century of being here, so that I can end up being the grandmother that I grew up with. Thank you.
I want to build a more prosperous and equitable Seattle. I'm the only candidate who's thinking long-term here. You guys grew up watching Seattle Center and Spacefield Go, right? But we rejected public transit then. Your kids grew up on tech sector. You labeled Microsoft, they built Amazon. But the next generation, your grandkids and great-grandkids, that industry is going to be the green infrastructure as an answer to the climate problem that Roy was talking about. I am focused towards building that infrastructure in Seattle so we can have the next multi-generation value generated here so the world knows us, like they know that we own Microsoft, that we have Microsoft, we have Boeing, we have Starbucks. What are the next 100, 200,000 companies coming from Seattle? That's what I'm more focused on. There are other issues that we need to deal with, yes. Pressing problems. And those will continue. We need to address them smart. They are all addressed in my literature and my letter outside on my platform. But I'm going to get the job done. I work on my condo. It's about compromise. It's about using your dollars effectively and efficiently. But meeting the people, getting them along, taking them along with you. So I have, my name is Shubhita Gavala. I asked for your vote. And I asked for your democracy voucher because a lot of them have it upstairs. I want your support in my campaign so I can succeed and make it better for your grandkids and great-grandkids. Thank you. Thank you for having us here.
How was the time? Yes, to applaud to all of our candidates. They have been remarkably good in keeping to schedule, obeying the timekeepers and your attention. I've been watching from behind here and I am very impressed. Good for us. I think Laura has some words for you. I just want to say, have a good evening.
Well, thank you, Anne. You said some of the things that I was going to say, but I just, I'm so uplifted by this group of candidates. I'm just think you're giving us a wonderful treat to come. Your saying and your enthusiasm and thinking of this whole new council that you're going to be part of. So thank you. I wanted to say a thank you too to the people that were responsible for helping put on this forum tonight. Risa Ranson, if she's still here, our technical director. Kerry Kritsky, our video camera person. I want to thank Adele Waddles for being such a struculous and deep-minded people. And yours, Ray, Rebecca Tura. And to Beth Durshtal, who organized all the volunteers who worked tonight on greeting candidates and other jobs. So thank you all. Most of all, thank you to the audience. You are the ones that really count now. Your vote is going to decide the outcome of the election. And if nothing else, we are voters here, so.
Thank you for being voter.
So you'll be getting your ballots about the middle of July. They're getting mailed out on the 12th of July. They have to be returned by August 1st, the primary date. And that's, that's just really, really important at work that you do. But I hope now you will think about what you heard tonight, pick up the literature. We asked the candidates to leave outside of Anderson Mall, but please don't go home without picking up the candidates' literature. And I think that's it for tonight. Thank you all again.